Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening, I was starting to be concerned that I was going to be meeting by myself.
Well, you know, I wasn't sure if it was the same, it's probably the same meeting ID and passcode for all the meetings, it has to be, because I'm like, I didn't get a, I didn't get a link.
Oh, I just went to the town website and got in through there.
Which is the, the password is 664-803.
Yes.
Yeah, so I just got home from work, I'm like, oh my gosh, I gotta get, I have two meetings tonight. So this one is gonna take over the other meeting for now. I'll hop on when I get off, when I get off for this one.
And I'm recused because it's Parker Street is the only thing on the agenda.
Right. Yeah, so 120, one, uh, what is it, 120, I wasn't bothered that day, it's 128?
Yes, it's the Market Basket Plaza.
Right.
128 Parker Street.
128, but then there, there's that other, there's that home on Parker Street that they want to redo.
Which one?
126 Parker Street.
Oh.
Did you know that one?
Yeah, that, that's the house that they want to, in front of the other building.
Right, that's, so that was a confusion for me because I'm saying, wow, that's the wrong address. Then I got the information today.
Well, it's nice that they've been, you know, restoring the properties along Parker Street, you know, all the residential properties.
Yes.
Are, are suddenly all, you know, the ones that have been boarded up or underutilized, and now being rebirthed, if you will.
There is, there is a rebirth in Maynard. As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm under, I'm under, I'm doing the same thing, renovation on Great Road. I bought that old, old house on Great Road. Do you know, do you know that house?
The one towards Snow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the corner of Summer Hill.
Oh, I didn't know, so you bought that.
I bought that. Well, it wasn't my intentions to buy it, but we went out for Sunday drive and I said, oh, so we, now, now the problem is to, for the construction, and it is just so expensive.
Right, right.
And we can't find any work. I mean, workers, I mean, you know, we call these companies, and when you call it, when we're calling a huge company, they're asking for, you know, just way too much.
Plus, the price of materials is double what it used to be.
Yeah.
If you can get them.
The windows, I mean, we looked at windows, they won't come out for at least eight months. So we're stuck. So, this too shall pass.
Yes, we can hardly wait.
Yeah, this too shall, that's, that's, that's what I have to say to myself, this too shall pass.
I say to my wife, I only want to live through one pandemic.
That's it, just one.
Yeah.
You know something? We, we, this generation, our generation has seen a lot. Has seen way too much, from, from nine eleven, I mean, you know, all the way up to here. And I see the changes. It is, hopefully, it's, this too shall pass. Any good news other than that?
Let's see.
No.
I wish I did, you know, you're, I just got home from work as well, and I haven't really paid attention, my day started at five o'clock in the morning.
Ditto, so did mine. I left the house, I left, so five o'clock, I left at six thirty this morning. I just walked in about a half hour ago, and now I'm here.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, we have a full board of everybody, I think.
They should be able to hear me now.
I will open up the meeting for the Maynard Planning Board. It is Tuesday, Tuesday, February 8th, and the time I have is 7:01 PM. Since it's a virtual meeting, I'm gonna do a little call, and if all board members could just confirm that they can hear and participate, Bob Brown? Yeah, I just, you're in participating, you know. Natalie, Robert?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Thanks, Jim. Annette Caribbean?
Yeah.
Okay, and Bill, I already spoke with you, you can obviously hear and participate. Let's, um, and it sounded like Capital Project was waiting for, or the Capital, sorry, Capital Projects, something I work on, sorry. The Capital Group Properties is still waiting on a few folks to join us, so we'll, we'll go to the minutes.
All right.
What are the, what's the date of the minutes? The minutes I've heard of the meeting on?
January 25th.
January 25th, thank you.
And, um, let's see, I can't.
I have no comments.
I'll move to approve the minutes from January 2050, 2022.
I'll second that.
All in favor by voice, Bob Brown?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so for the record, Bill, that's five zero in favor of approving the minutes from January 25th.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Danny on Capital Group Properties, is your team here now, Danny?
Yeah, John just got in.
Excellent, so allow me to just take a minute to open up the meeting. I will open up the public hearing for Maynard Crossing, this is, Maynard Crossing JV LLC is requesting a modification to the site plan and special permit for building R3 at two dash fifteen Digital Way, did I get that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Danny, if you don't mind, introduce yourself for the record, and then your team that's going to be presenting today.
Yes, Daniel Ruiz from Capital Group Properties, and with me tonight, we have John Cusick from Bowler Engineering, the civil engineer from, for the project. So tonight, we're before the board for a modification to the R3 building, which is also known as eleven Digital Way. Let me just share the screen for the everyone to see that.
Before you get started, Danny, Bill Nims, is there any context you hear that you would like to provide us, any frame you would like to provide us? It's your choice.
Yeah, well, just in a very high level overview, this is part of the determining if there's a consistency with the overall concept plan as approved by town meeting, that's the one different element of this particular site plan amendment, and it's also amending the, so it would be amending the square footage, in this case, the reduction, and I think that's pretty much the only thing guys would, just to refresh with.
So, so I understand the, the original building itself, Bill Nims, was approved based on the original site plans and back to the decision itself, which, whatever date that occurred many years ago, is that correct?
Yes, if the board, if the board decides to approve this request, what we would do, we would amend the the original site plan, which we've done a number of times. We would have a new, Danny's team would make a adjustment to the approved plan, and it would reflect these changes, and then we would also update their concept plan, which is just stay with the square footage and the uses.
So the, the question before the board then is to approve the changes and the modifications made from the original building design, correct?
Yes, yes, well, yes, you're gonna do that, but, but you're gonna, what you just want to establish is that if you believe it is in general, um, consistency with what the town approved at town meeting, and then approving the, the actual amendment to the site plan and the special permit, so.
Thanks, thanks, Bill. I, I was just asking, because I know we have members that were not part of, I don't know if we have, I think Bill Crenshaw might have been part of the original decision perhaps, but I think we have members that were not part of the original decision, so thank you for that context. Danny, so you, no, not you either, okay, all right. So Danny, if you could just keep in, keep in mind, it's gonna be helpful, and you probably, I assume you're probably gonna do this already, but be helpful to, just to call, call out what was the original design and what the changes are that we're looking at, is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so Danny, please, if you, if you will, walk us through what you're looking at.
Well, first, I just want to say that, so Wayne did do a review on this, on the first initial plans that were submitted, we got a review letter from Wayne last Friday, and we did have a chance to review and update the site plans and give a response letter to that review letter, and that was submitted today around two o'clock to Bill Nims and Wayne. I'm sure they haven't had much time to really review it, but just so that everyone, the board understands that that was submitted, and the, the changes were pretty minor. John, do you want to take over?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I guess, Danny, if you want to just blow it out, I'll just show where the buildings are in context, since they a lot of folks weren't on the board, so this is kind of a blow up of the, of the site plan. The main access is the bottom of the, of the sheet down there, and the truck access is to the top of the sheet. Everything really is what's been pre-approved by this board, so we're, however, just looking at a minor change to the R3 building, which is shown up, up top, so now, if you, if you blow back in, I can, I can get back into it. So what you're looking at is two colors, one is gray and one is red. The red color is essentially what was previously approved. It showed one building within the developed area that we're working with, at about fifty-six thousand square feet, give or take. It had some loading spaces to the rear of the building, right off of the, right off of the main drive aisle, but it was just one main building with a couple of tables to the, to the front of the, of the site. All of the parking fields surrounding it on all, really, I guess, four sides with the drive aisle, none of that's changing, that's all what was previously approved. It's essentially just the, the building footprint and courtyard area. So what we're simply looking to do, instead of having one large building at about fifty-six thousand square feet, we're looking to have two smaller buildings totaling about forty-six thousand five hundred square feet. So it's a reduction of approximately ninety-four hundred square feet of building area from what was approved. And you'll notice, we now have a much nicer courtyard that bisects the two buildings, that was really one of the, the main reasons for this, just to have smaller spaces and more amenity areas that really just make it a nicer spot for pedestrians. So that's essentially the change, the buildings are, instead of one large building, we have two smaller buildings with the, with the reduction of approximately ninety-four hundred square feet. Those notches to the rear of the building, you see those, those white notches, that's essentially the loading area, so it's now off of the street, it's designated spot for that to enter the, enter the site. We've also added where there previously was a loading area to the top of the sheet on the drive aisle, we've put some parking spaces in there, so there's about twenty-five parking stalls that are added there, and I suspect that would be really employee parking for the buildings. All of the customers would, would likely be to the front of the, to the front of the site, but.
That was actually one of the comments on, from Wayne, and we did agree to, we could make that as employee parking.
Yep, yep, absolutely. And that's such really the, the plan, it's very, very straightforward, it's very similar, it's really just a reorientation of the, of the building, from one building into, into two with a larger amenity space. As Danny had mentioned, this has gone out to your, your peer reviewer, and it was a pretty straightforward review, there was nothing that they really identified that was problematic. They didn't take exception to what was submitted, they did have a couple of comments, which were good comments that we, we agreed to do, and I can just walk you through those real quick. The parking stalls that are behind the building, they're, they're ninety-degree parking stalls. Since that section of the, of the roadway is one-way, they requested that we make them angled parking stalls. Yeah, thank you, Danny. So that's what we've done, we've angled them to really promote folks from heading in the proper direction from when they park, just to make sure they're not going against the flow of traffic, so that was a good comment, we agreed with it. Along that same vein, when folks are going into the loading area, they just wanted to make sure that they left in the proper direction, so Wayne had asked us to add a couple of signs at the ends of each of those loading areas with a, essentially a one-way sign with an arrow, forcing everybody to, to go left. Again, very, very good comment, we've added those on this revised set. And then he wanted us to extend the heavy-duty paving, the heavy-duty paving is denoted by that hatched area, the diagonal hatch. We inadvertently didn't show it within the, I'll call it the, the truck loading area, so we extended it to the truck loading area just to make sure that that pavement was of a thicker nature to handle any, the vehicles that would go in those, those areas. That was really the only comments that he had relative to the, to the, to the site plan. Like, let's step back, they, they wanted us to confirm that the, the lighting was zero at the property line, which we have done, shown that lighting plan, and you can see the zero for candles at the property line, so that was provided. And then the one last comment, it, it really wasn't related to this plan set per se, but it was, oh, sorry, thank you, it was a bike rack, they wanted us to add a bike rack in the, in the middle of the, of the site, excuse me, I forgot about that, so you can see right in the courtyard, we added a bike rack. But as we're saying, the one comment not related to this site, they put in their comment letter that they wanted us to do, was just to add a couple of bollards over at the ATM, which was previously approved. We've added that to the site plan, just to show that it was in there, so it didn't really have anything to do with this application, but we, we don't take exception to that, so we wanted us to add a couple of additional bollards there, which are now shown on the site plan. That's really, that's really it, it's pretty straightforward change in the plan, but would be happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information that, that you might have.
Thanks, Danny and John. I, let's, we'll, we'll go to the board with questions and comments, and then hopefully we'll have, hopefully there'll be hopefully we'll be able to join, join us shortly after that, I think. And not that I don't, I, I read the comment letter from Wayne as well, it seems to match, but I always like to have Wayne on record, just confirming that he's, he's saying the same things that you guys are saying. So we'll go to the board itself, so for board members, any comments and questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I've got two, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Can somebody bring up the Green International Report and the figure in that report?
Hold on one second.
Yeah, I can do it.
I have it right, okay. Page four of the PDF.
That's not right, sorry.
Oh, you got it.
Oh, I got it, okay.
Yeah, page four of the PDF.
Ready?
Correct. Zoom in on the, so the red comments are legible.
Yeah, yeah, I'm working on it.
That's good. So I just had a question about one of those comments, the drainage from the canopies, not flooding the ramps, and I didn't see anything addressed, any other documents saying it was checked and all okay. Has, has that been double-checked?
Apologize, I was on, I was on mute. I, I believe that's all squared away, I think that the, the concern is that it won't be going over the, over the walkways, I believe, is that what they're?
I guess, you know.
Just want to make sure it's not directed to wheelchair ramps, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's a ramp, and there's water running off the canopy, and where does the water go? It's probably gonna try to go right to the ramp. But I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I just want to know that somebody's double-checked it and said it's okay.
Yeah, we can certainly work with the architect just to make sure that, that, that the gutter goes where it needs to, and any type of a downspout would, would not go to the, would not go to the.
What, what type of canopies are those?
As of right now, I don't, it's, they're fully designed from the architect yet. But typically, so with this, we have, we usually have like about a foot and a half of crushed stone, so what we would do is divert any rain, you know, that comes off the canopies to make sure that it falls within that area, so that it goes, infiltrates right into the ground. But we can talk with the architect about that.
I, I think you guys understand the nature of this comment, and that's just not to impact any ADA sort of accessibility issues, particularly in the winter conditions, so I, I think you guys understand all that.
Yeah.
What else, Bill Crenshaw, anything else?
My other comment isn't pertaining to this exhibit, but it's in regards to the increase in parking, because, a little confused, because not all that long ago, we approved an ATM, and it got approved because it was stated that they didn't need all the parking. But this project is adding parking, which is doubly confusing, because it's actually reducing the building size, which should reduce parking. So frankly, you know, if you did it by building size, they should have thirty-five fewer spaces, rather than twenty-five more spaces. Now, I'm not sure. That bothers me all that much, except for the location of the proposed spaces, they're behind the building, facing the residential buffer. And we've had complaints on the other side of the project at the market, where employee parking activity and chatting late at night, blah, 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 was an annoyance, and I just think that we don't really have a reason, we don't really need these parking spaces, so why risk annoying the neighbors? And then lastly, I would point out that if they were angled the way they are, there is no private vehicle access to those spaces. The only access is from the truck entrance off of Parker Street. So, I kind of think it's impractical to have them there, but since we don't really need them, I think we try to avoid the potential nuisance.
We can, I can circle back with our team and, and see whether or not we can get rid of the parking in the back. I do understand where you're coming from about Field Street and the butters along that area. I can, we'll circle back and try to see if we can get rid of those, and hopefully get that updated for the next meeting.
And am I correct that that, that entrance there is only truck access, it's not private vehicles, right, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, Bill, so for context, you're talking about the, this northernmost driveline. Is that one way all the way from the road?
Yeah, can you just bring up that map with showing the angled spaces?
It's, since it's, since this is a virtual meeting, I do want to make sure that we're all pointing, pointing to the same stuff, so that people can see what we're looking at.
Yeah, as Danny's calling that up, it, it is, it is.
That one there.
Yeah, it, it is one way all the way from Parker Street, so it, it comes in all the way from the end as, as one way. It was the designated truck route, so there's really no need for, for anybody else to really drive there, because there's nothing on that side of the, of the building, really. Doesn't mean you can't get in there, but it's, it's really where you wanted the trucks to, to go, and it becomes a two-way drive aisle right at the end of where we're working, so right there, it's actually two-way, so the pavement goes from twenty-two feet to twenty-four feet. And that hasn't changed, that's what was on the original, all of the original plans and approvals, so we're keeping that consistent.
Okay, so maybe Bill Nims can clarify at some point, that secondary entrance from Parker Street can be used by anybody, it's just that trucks must use it, or trucks on that side of the property must use it, is that the deal?
Right, yeah.
Anybody can enter there?
Yes, it was the, if I remember correctly, the.
Part of the operations and maintenance plan. We designated this as one of the main tra, the main entrances for trucking, just to avoid less traffic on the main access down here. The roundabout, yeah, exactly, so that they can avoid the roundabout, and we wouldn't clog up the main drag. So this access is, is mainly for the trucks. Cars can go back there, but typically you won't see cars back there, just because there's not really anything for the cars to go back here. It would be if we had the employee parking back here, that would be, you know, the only reason, or if you're coming in to turn down to R9, the R4 building right here, but you typically don't see everyone coming into here, you see them usually going down to the main drag.
Okay, all right, well, I appreciate the clarification, and my comment that you might not actually be able to access these spaces would be incorrect, although I guess my comment about we don't really need them, and why risk creating a problem still stands.
Yeah, we, we can look at that.
Thank you.
But if I could just add to the context of that, if I, when we look at how space is used, I think there are, obviously, there's many priorities, one is obviously parking and access. Other priorities, at least from the town or mayor's standpoint, have been impervious versus pervious surfaces as well, so that's something to consider too, Danny, you know, that, that helps out in terms of how space is used. And I, and I tend to agree with Bill's comments on, it seems like the intent of this roadway was for truck deliveries, not necessarily for the parking, so I think that does make sense to me. Regarding impervious versus pervious services, has there been any change? What's, what's the sort of delta on that for this update?
Yep, yep, there, there has been a change to the, to the positive, so there is a reduction in impervious area by close to thirteen hundred square feet based on the change prior to any changes that we're talking about relative to cases being removed, but so as, as submitted, it's about a thirteen hundred square foot reduction in pavement.
Great, excuse, other board comments at this time?
Yes, I have one, Chris. Could you point out where the dumpsters will be?
John, I believe they were proposed to be in here, but we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, I think it would be in that truck loading area.
Yeah.
I saw something earlier that they were gonna put it behind, use the R4 dumpster, I thought I saw something in the package somewhere, it was an earlier version.
Either way, it's got to be confirmed before, yeah, plans can be approved, so.
We will confirm the, the, the trash location.
Any thoughts, Jim, on, on what you would, you know, from your experience and perspective, what that should have been?
Well, what is the, I'm trying to see here, what is the width of that opening?
Thirty-eight feet, thirty-eight feet.
I'm sorry, thirteen feet wide?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight feet wide and how long?
Um, seventy.
Okay, so you got thirty-eight feet, that should, yeah, you could, you could put the dumpsters in. Okay. So you got thirty-eight feet. That should, yeah, you could, you could put the dumpsters in there, but was an angle. And I think they, they'd be operable. Yes. I think what you should show where they're going to be.
Yep, we will make sure to do that.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Natalie, I think you, you had some comments as well.
Yeah, I was just going to ask as a layperson, can we look at the photometric report again, just because I'm curious as to what type of light fixtures we're talking about on the back of the building? Again, trying to jump ahead of any butter issues that might come up. The, I know that it's down to zero at the property line, but there was some discussion. Bill Nemser, maybe you remember about the, the style of fixture that's on the back of the building, be it the softer down lighting versus a larger, do you remember what I'm talking about?
I feel like. Oh, I do, I do. But we, well, Danny could probably clear it up more than I can, but we, we, I think it's some, we actually removed some, didn't we?
Yes, correct. Yeah. So what we're going to do is basically, these are all going to be down, you know, dark sky compliant. So it'll be facing down to avoid any of the, you know, glare towards the butters. And just so that, you know, there is a buffer basically of existing pine trees right in this area right now. So.
I just like to, you know, the, it can get so tricky. It's so nice to have this planned ahead so that, um, they get the lights that they have liked in the past. So that's great.
Yep. Yeah, we'll make sure to use the, the, the ones that we've used previously that are not, that are downward facing and that there's nothing going up.
I think your previous comment right there, Danny, is, is helpful from the perspective of some of the feedback we received from residences in the neighborhood. Do you know what the changes are from the previous light scheme to the current light scheme? Particularly on the backside.
So a bit off the top of my head, I don't have that. We can have that, that, I can have them do a overlay or, you know, to show exactly where they previously were, the lights that were on the building. But I, as of right now.
You know, if, if the, if this new photometric study is similar or improved with its light distribution towards the residents, that's an easy, that's an easy thing to say yes to, right? Yeah. So it makes it very easy for someone like me to go, oh, it's the same or improved. Okay.
Yeah. So we definitely, the, the photometrics previously did have to be zero candles at the property line, which this meets the same thing. This has been, this is how it was approved in the last time, last go around with zero candles at the property line. That's, I believe, part of your regulations. So we do meet that.
Of course, I believe that. And my, my, my thought was that, you know, if there's even less, just whatever, it's just an easy thing to say that there is no change of condition compared to what was already approved because that's, that's what we're engaged in at this moment.
Yep, okay.
Right. So that two years from now, someone has a, someone has a challenge to this. Sorry, Natalie. We can go back and say, look, we compared it to the original decision. It was the same or better. That's how we make our decisions. Sorry, Natalie, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I was just going to also say, in terms of the traffic flow for the delivery truck or the, the access to the loading areas, I'm assuming that that twenty-two foot wide, right, two foot wide, um, driving aisle plus the thirty-eight foot wide entrance into that area would hopefully create deliveries that did not involve many point turns with many beeps and lots of loudness. As opposed to the previous design, which would have been, I think, like a pull-up parallel situation. I don't know. Is that true? Maybe?
Yeah, the, the, the types of trucks that would be going into these areas are going to be smaller trucks. They're not going to be the bigger trucks. So they would definitely be pulling in all the way to unload. And then they would just be backing back out and then just on their way.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
You may, Bill.
Hey Danny, um, did you tell, while we're, I have a lull here for a second, would you talk for a moment about the sort of the market decision with this, like how with the, going with smaller spaces and so on? Can you just give a little overview of that for the board?
Yeah, I, I, I can do that right now. So I spoke with our marketing and our leasing people. And basically what they said was the problems they're seeing is the big box and the junior anchors aren't really expanding and they're not really going out to these entire regions, which are not near like major highways. So what we've been really seeing is the smaller local and regional tenants looking for these spaces. It's more for the smaller tenants, like a thousand square feet and up. So we would be looking at retail office and restaurant. So it's not what we had typically, what we had originally envisioned at the beginning of the project, which were, you know, these big tenants taking up twenty, thirty thousand square feet. We're just not seeing that. So it's been kind of, the markets kind of changed to the smaller retail tenants. So that was kind of the driving change on this one.
Thanks, Danny.
Bob, did you have any comments?
Thanks, Chris. I'm in the butter to the project, so.
Understood. You can comment once I get to public comment, Bob, then. They will open up for public comment. And that, any, any thoughts, questions or considerations? And then I think you're on mute, but I, I, I was doing some rip, reading, and I think you said that you didn't have anything.
No, not at the moment. Thank you.
Can Danny or John, can you just walk us through the, the accessibility changes? And they don't seem like much. I see a couple of crosswalks that have been renegotiated and things like that. But can you just walk us through that? And then the sidewalks themselves, just to confirm either no changes or any changes made?
Yeah, no, there really, there really haven't been any changes. Essentially what may have moved, if you put the overlay plan back, back on Danny, you can just see some of those striped areas that may have shifted a little bit just to align with the ramp. And that's, that, that's really it. Just based on where the doors were located, we tried to shift those over a few feet this way or that way. But it's the same accessibility. We still have the same pedestrian connection points to the parking field that was originally approved. We have not touched any of that, that, that maintains. We're just making sure that we have the curb ramps to accept those in a location near where the doors are shown on the proposed buildings.
Understood. Any changes to tree scape or landscaping that's being proposed?
No, nothing, nothing in the, in the parking lot areas. Again, those, anything outside the buildings around remains as was originally approved. This layout actually just gives us more green area within the courtyards, as I mentioned, to be able to put some landscaping in. Again, we added approximately thirteen hundred feet of, of green areas that, that didn't exist previously. So we have more opportunity for plantings.
Great, thank you. Any changes to elevations at all for the, for the buildings or sidewalks or, or pavement areas or anything?
No, the building pad pretty much stays the same. As, as I mentioned, the surrounding parking, we, we didn't touch. So we really kind of had to use that same elevation. The grades are all consistent with what was previously there.
And any need for looking at stormwater changes because of the, the difference in layouts or surface conditions?
No, very minor. It was just changing the, the roof connections and providing in those courtyards, you can see we have some basins in the, the truck loading areas. So we just needed to make sure that, that those were connected to the stormwater system, which we were able to do. And and I know that Wayne had looked at that and he had mentioned in his comment letter, he was comfortable how the piping was, was configured and connected.
Yeah. So the dots in the center of the loading dock areas, those are drains.
Yes.
Stormwater drains.
Yep, that is correct. We've got that, that area, as I mentioned, seventy feet long by, you know, approximately forty feet wide. So just needed to make sure we captured that water. You can't really drain away in that area, right? Because the buildings are all at the same elevation. So we kind of forced a low point. So we can capture that water and pipe it out to a treatment unit.
Bill Crenshaw, see your hand up.
Yeah, can we go back to the, the red markup version here? I just realized, looking at this on the left-hand side of building R three A, on the old plan, that used to just be a dead area, no sidewalks, nothing. And it was like snow storage or something. And now I'm guessing now it's going to have entrances to businesses on that side. Is that the deal?
Yeah, I think as Danny had mentioned, the, the original buildings were, were kind of designed as a, like a larger box area where, where you really would have fewer tenants and all the entrances would be to the, to the, to the front. So now, based on this new building configuration, it's designed to have, you know, multiple small tenants in there. So you'll, you'll see you've got the doors accessing it on, really on three sides of the, of the building. So you just have more smaller uses rather than less larger uses.
Okay, I just hadn't realized that side of the building is now going to be active. Okay, good.
This. Is there any ADA compliance there? Do you need parking spaces on the left side of building now because of that? I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I don't believe so. I believe as, as it's drawn, it complies, but we'll, we'll, we'll take a closer, a closer look at that. I don't think we need any there.
I don't think I have anything else at the moment. Bill is, I don't see anyone on, is there anyone on the phone? I'll open up the public comments at this time. You know, besides Bob Brown being the only one that can potentially have the public comments, I don't have anyone else. So Bob, the floor is yours.
It's us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to pick up on that north entrance into the site that's used by trucks. And I recall there being discussion when the project went through the permitting phase initially over, you know, how that road would be used. And there was real concern of the Field Street neighborhood about how that road would be used and the need to limit access to cars. And so today, the only cars that are using it that I see are cars that want to go to the one ten grill. And, you know, for, for them, they're avoiding driving down to the traffic light. So whoever comes through that entrance on the north side gets to avoid the light. And so I'm just a little concerned that what this proposal may be doing is inviting more cars to use that truck access road. And then you'll find that there are cars driving down to player fitness. There are cars driving down the side of the new buildings via that track access route. So, you know, it, it almost makes me wonder whether that entry should be posted to be for trucks only, if it's going to be a truck route. You know, so you force all the traffic to go down to the traffic light, traffic light and circle through that way. But that's my, my comment.
Thanks, Bob. Danny, it's a, that, I just want to be clear, that's a public comment that Bob Brown's making. He's not in a planning board capacity tonight. So please, please take that under consideration like we would all public comments. And as good neighbors, as you always have demonstrated to be, please, please consider what Bob, Bob's saying in that context in this case.
Okay, yep.
Thanks, Danny.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jim, please.
Just a comment about the truck traffic. Right now, with the units that are in the complex now, about ninety-eight percent of the truck traffic goes in and around the rotary, in, in the internal rotary. Very few trucks come in from the street and go all the way around to get to market basket or paper store or whatever. If you're talking about this going to be a truck access, are you going to try to eliminate the trucks coming in on the main entrance?
So, um, no, we're not. So basically the way most of the traffic does come in this way, because it's going to market, the market basket. But the, the truck traffic that will be coming for, you know, these units wouldn't go down through the rotary. They would, they would come in here and just, and to unload over here. I just don't see what, see them coming all the way down to go down through the rotary. And then all the way around are one and then back up to here because that's a one-way. So you can't do that. So any, any truck, truck traffic that's for these buildings would specifically have to go down this road. Because it's a one-way right here. So it ends right.
Danny, that still leaves about ninety-eight percent of the truck traffic going down the, the center there and around the rotary. Why, if that's the case, you're going to have just a few trucks coming in on that truck access. Why not leave that open for cars?
So it's not only strict, it's not restricted to only truck traffic. It's, it's mainly used for truck traffic, but some vehicles are allowed to go through there. You just typically wouldn't see vehicles coming in this way. Usually they'll come in through the digital way to get to the center portion of the site. You just, unless you, you're specifically coming back here for parking in this area, I just, or going to R four. Most, I, I mean, I don't see why a car would come in this, coming through the northern portion. We're not trying to restrict it one way or another.
Well, I'm not suggesting you do restrict it to Danny. I'm just commenting on it. That's all.
Yep, yep. And I understand that.
Thanks, Jim.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Wayne is going to be able to jump on in a second. They have the well for A right now, which was, which is a bit touchy, but we have Wayne at the moment. So.
Okay.
And I apologize for being late. I can stay for a few minutes. We get kind of a lot of questions from the commission on this important project for the town. So I got to go back. But I just didn't know if you needed my opinion or anything. So I wanted to jump over.
I understand, Wayne. Thank you for joining. And please continue to triage the needs of the town, if you could. The, the, my, my, my one question to you was, if you, I, I don't want to rehash everything that the applicant has presented.
Of course.
Do you, knowing what you have reviewed and what has been submitted, do you have anything pending that you would like to see changed or anything that the board should be aware of from your point of view, based on the signals?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm doing a speed reading course here of Bowler's response to comments that we received this afternoon.
Like, wait, wait, let's do this. How about just, um, it can confirm in writing later on. I don't, you know, I don't want to speed read or, or have to go through, you know, let's do this correctly. Take your time. Just give me a confirmation. And we're going to have to continue this anyways. So if we could just be prepared next time to confirm that what, what's been presented is the same thing that you're seeing. That's all.
That sounds fine. If you have to continue, that's fine. I will absolutely get you that, that agreement.
Does that sound fair, John and Danny?
Yeah, that'll give us some time to looking at the parking in the back and comparing the, making sure that the photometrics for the, and the lighting is similar to what was previously approved.
Was John and Danny, was there anything else that you wanted to get the boards input on since Wayne is here, anything specific that we've discussed?
My end.
Okay, Wayne, thank you for doing, I know it's a busy, busy night for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I apologize for being late. I will follow up. I'll review this. I'll get you a confirmation.
Wayne, one, one, the, the, just so you understood the conditions that we had so far, or the concerns were real quick. There was, the board asked Danny and, and John to look at reducing the parking in the rear along Field Street because they believe that there was adequate parking provided now. That was one thing that they're going to look at. And as Danny said, the lighting, you know, it's on the back of the building, I wouldn't. But that was the biggie. So.
Actually, I did. Actually, I did. Well, I'll comment on the lighting real quick. You know, I I did have a comment, uh, in my review letter on the lighting. It it was unclear where the property line was. They've clarified that on this revised plan. And what they've provided for photometrics certainly looks, uh, more than reasonable. They're showing zero foot candles in ninety percent of the areas. And only a half, a point one foot candle over the fence line in just a small area. So this meets my understanding of the criteria. So I'm fine with that. I bet they can still look into it as requested by other members of the of the board, but, um, I'm fine with what they've submitted on that. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Wayne. You are really stiff. You would like to continue your duties in other places.
You guys have a great night.
Go get us water.
That's right. Thank you.
I'm ready to continue. Um, board members, is there any anything else you you'd like to say?
I guess wanted, I just wanted to generally jump in with our public commenters. Um, I think that keeping the abutters in mind during all of this you know, the best that we can do. I think that you're going to do that, Danny. And the question is, adjust the parking, you know, find a different way to deal with truck traffic. I mean, I'd rather, I'd, as a person who drives through the development all the time, having truck, truck, truck traffic in the center of it so that the abutters are not listening to trucks revving all day is like great with me. I don't know, you know, I feel like it's much less. And as a person who has been there, it has not been difficult to drive around. So I don't know. I don't have a solution, but.
Yeah, and and we get mixed reviews from both sides. We hear from Field Street, we have from Parker Street and, you know, so we get, we try to balance both as much as we can and, uh, and try to just make sure we can address everyone's, uh, concerns.
The funny thing is I have, I drive from that side of, you know, from from town. And I've never once thought about turning down that that little entrance on the side. Now I'm like, wow, maybe I could get to my haircut faster. Interesting to consider.
Yes, please go in.
Oh, I was going to say, if you're inclined to to continue our February twenty-second meeting, we're beginning early because we have the M A P C Powder Mill, uh, presentation at six thirty. And then we have one other item on there. I'm trying to blank what it is. Oh, yeah, food club. Right, right. Yeah. So that we could, we could, we could, that would, we could fit this on there if you wish.
Knowing that Wayne typically likes two weeks for review, do you expect any additional signals, Danny and John?
No, I mean, other than we'll look at the parking, but we should be able to get that addressed quickly. Um, other than that, I think that's really it.
I think I think Wayne would be fine with having less than the ideal two weeks for that type of minor item.
Um, there, there was also the issue of the dumpsters.
Yes, oh yes, the dumpster. And the, uh, you're going to chuck on the downspout is not going on the handicap rack.
It it's up to you guys. Uh, February twenty-second is an offer. What's, Bill, what's March, the first March meeting look like?
I don't know, um.
Anyway, what's your preference, Danny?
I think we can make it for the twenty-second. I I I'm fairly, um, confident that we can get this addressed fairly quickly and get this over.
The first item, I believe, that night will be the co-op and that might be a longer, um, a longer meeting, um, that, you know, I would. I would anticipate that potentially being an hour, maybe longer. Um, so just keep that in mind and that's going to have a lot of public interest. So I am going to put that first on the agenda. No offense to you guys. But just keep this, you know. Keep that in mind, uh, if you want to participate in that meeting or not. It's totally your call.
Yeah, and and we can always follow up with, uh, Bill and just, uh, whether or not, well, you know, we want to be, well, we can continue to the next meeting. I just, I think just to let's, I prefer we be on the the next meeting and then we can always revisit that with Bill.
I'm okay with that. So I will make a motion to continue this hearing to February twenty-second. Did I get that correct, Bill? February twenty-second?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor by voice, uh, Jim?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Uh, and that? And that, can I get your, can I get your voice off of me, please?
I apologize, yes.
Thank you, and that, and I'm also, yes. So that's five zero for a continuance until February twenty-second. Thank you, Danny. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So, we already completed the minutes?
Yes, sir.
We, we haven't touched, based on the way we've had a couple of busy meetings, I feel like. And we've had, we've had a number of initiatives we've been, um, working towards. So, um, I'll, I guess I'll recap a few items. Uh, on the home occupation, home, not occupation, home occupation front. Um, we have a public hearing tomorrow for a listening session.
Public meeting, not a hearing, right, tomorrow's meeting.
Public meeting, sorry, public meeting, starting at six P M. Uh, virtual meeting as well. And that's to get, that's to hear public input on the potential for the zoning by law changes. Bill Crenshaw, Bill Demzer and and, um, members from the zoning board continue to make progress on that front. Um, I joined a meeting a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I will be, so the meeting tomorrow, I'll be providing a presentation. It gives kind of an overview of the concept and then we'll just go to Q and A and discussion. So I don't know what that's going to look like, um, but we'll find out. Um, on the Powder Mill corridor initiative, uh, Bill, I saw that we, we applied for a grant. Can can you or Bob just brief the board on that?
Sure. Bob, you want to?
Go ahead, Bill.
So, um, we, um, have wrapped up and and that's what the meeting on the twenty-second will be. The first grant and M A P C is going to present their findings. So we, um, drafted a, uh, request for what we're calling phase two. Um, and that is, has three specific objectives. I don't know if we'll, they'll all be funded as part of this, but, you know, we'll see. So the first objective is to help us, um, with the over development of an overlay zoning district. And as, you know, I, they, um, that was one of their recommend, that's one of the recommendations, one of our, what we figured all along. And, um, I think I hope that maybe at one point it will be in person and we can have maybe some, um, a workshop, a public workshop, you know, where we can go over that. But again, the the whole thinking behind this is that public input is paramount for, you know, a number of reasons in this. And so we we made good progress on the first one with that. And we're going to do that hopefully with the, uh, development of the overlay. The second objective is to develop, um, I'm using the word templates, but you guys, I mean, we talked about this before. You understand basically, um, talking about, uh, for, um, riverfront activation where it's appropriate. And the idea would be that as development is considered, um, by us or or the, uh, conservation commission, whoever, that there are, um, we have a general idea of what is appropriate in the particular, uh, location for our river access. So we need, there's a lot to understand what what Bob, Bob, you had a great phrase. It was, uh, what do you say? I, what did you say? Identify the impediments or do something to that effect. But because of regulatory, um, considerations and so on, um. And, uh, there's more to that, but I don't want to get down. I don't want to digress too much. The third, uh, objective is, um, to come up with non-motorized vehicular, um, templates so that we can, um, maybe even continue some of the, um, from some of the Acton, um, complete streets elements down Powder Mill. I don't know, um, you know, what this will look like exactly. We have a template that was made as part of, um, I'm going to call it phase one, the earlier powder plant. Um, but I would like to get a, a, a number of templates with buffers and and that we could use depending on the amount of available space. So those are the three things that we ask for, that we want to achieve out of this, um. I don't know. I think we, I think we did pretty well with this one with M A P C. So I got my, our fingers crossed that we will get that. And that, um, I anticipate we will hear about in the next. Well, well, maybe we'll even hear about it when they, uh, come in a couple of weeks, but I would say in the next month.
Mr. Chair, question for Bill. Um, so to develop the overlay district, is that something that we would be doing in-house or is that something you'd be looking with outside assistance?
Um, well, i- i- of course, you know, the development of it, I would see as hopefully, I I would like to have some facilitation from M A P C to help us along with it. Um, I think there's a lot of opportunities and there's some, um, there's some chances for some novel approaches, I think, that we we, that may be a benefit to the town that I would like to have M A P C there to weigh, um, but ultimately, of course, it's the planning board's baby. Um, but it, you know, having M A P C plow to field and engage in the dialogue and everything is 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 something I would look at as avotative. Frankly, um, you know, we're, you you know, we saw this, uh, when the first housing production plan came along, um. We had some questions were raised and and things about, and we were talking about the need, um, you know, for at this point was for the having a a house or production plan, having M A P C come in and and they did some workshops with it. And it changed the tone totally. It was good. People are sick, you know, me, i- i- and and it probably, um, I think would would only help to have them, but that's my thought. Board, you know, the board doesn't want, if the board feels that, you know, something they don't want, we'll tailor it, whatever you guys want. Got to get it first, though.
Do we need to go get funding to have support from M A P C to help us with creating a zoning district?
They, last time we lucked out, we didn't because we got funding from, um, M A P C. But then, if you remember, um, we were able, we wrote that grant from, um, E E A environment. What is it? No, wait, economic. What's E E A, Bob? Economic, whatever.
Environmental and energy affairs?
Yeah, yeah. And and, um, so they they picked up the rest of the tab for us. Um, I'll try again for, um.
If, yeah, there's anything that we need to do ahead of time to line us up to receive money, um, obviously, that's great, particularly with external money. If we need to request that in from from town government, obviously, there's a, I'm very unfamiliar with this, but I'm assuming there's a process to request money for town to pay for something like that, correct?
Yeah, I guess there is. Um, I wouldn't.
I would like professional services, though, either either way. That'd be my goal would be to try to obtain professional services. It it makes it so that we're not flying by the seat of our pants. Also, it gives us checks from those that have a lot of extensive background and experience on on this thing so that, you know, it at least eliminates the perception that we're just creating a zoning district. We're we're actually creating the zoning district based on professional help, which is very helpful.
And 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 one of the things we included with the application package, but we went to Acton Select Board. And we got them to sign a, um, letter of support for this whole initiative. And we went to our select board and did the same. So it's it's showing that, you know, we're trying to work in a multi-jurisdictional context and.
What you're suggesting is we go get money from Acton to pay for our rezoning.
Well.
And then we'll, 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 we'll have a matching funds.
The planning, the planning board bake sale is coming up.
Matching funds. We'll get our money from the M A P C, but they'll have to match it. It'll be the M O U S.
Dude, I can work in for that.
One of the things that I'm looking at, Chris, is, um, kind of to develop the spreadsheet that has the various grant state grant programs and also other relatable grant programs. There's some federal grant programs as well that we could tap into for either planning assistance or actually help with, um, some, you know, construction activities. So part of it is, we want to identify what the universe of the grants available are. Some of them are public grants, some of them are private grants. And also, um, what the timing is for the application. So part of, um, you know, this, this phase two, working with M A P C is, you know, as we're getting started, we're looking ahead towards what do we need to do after they've completed their plan? What's the next step? Because we may need to, you know, throw a hat into the ring of some of those grant applications, you know, while that work is ongoing. Otherwise, we're going to sit around waiting for the next round of funding to come around.
It couldn't have asked for a better strategy, Bob.
Well, we're, we're, we're.
Music to my ears.
I I think that with Bob's approach, we haven't, we have the next grant that we're going to go for. I ca- I can't remember the name of that one either, but the one Bob and I have identified one, it was, you know, with that way, as soon as, um, we need it. We want to get it in and and we can, um, that it would piggyback on this. So it's, it's, it's exciting. It's a long.
This seems like it's going to slow walk itself for a little while. Uh, we have to, you know, there's a cadence to it. There's going to be, you know, we have a presentation coming up next meeting.
Yeah.
And then, then, then we have a proposal out to provide to receive professional support. So hopefully we receive that and get that. And it sounds like Bob and Bill are thinking very strategically, more medium term on what other, what other resources are available to us so that we make really good decisions going into this. So um, it seems like this will slow walk itself and we're not going to have a lot of work to do, um, in the coming weeks and months, or am I wrong?
I don't want to speak out of turn.
You're, you're, you're the planning book director. You're not speaking out of turn.
No, 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 no. I I would be, no, but but I would say that there are some, there have been, uh, uh, some significant developments that we should hear about in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully by the time we have our presentation, uh, regarding, um, some, um, activity in there.
Okay, if if, I'm happy to try to move faster, but my understanding is it's it's very helpful to have that presentation on the next meeting.
Yes, yes.
And then it's going to be very helpful to receive professional support from the M A P C through the proposal that you submitted.
Yeah.
So it it's really hard for me to understand what can be done before those things are engaged.
Oh, oh, I'll tell you exactly what. I I I'll tell you what. And 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 this is, um, something that I was going to send out to you guys anyway. I thought, if you remember, we talked about this probably over the summer. But things that we wanted to make sure that we achieved with any zoning changes there. So for example, I remember we were talking, for me, I I would like to see what if we could come up with a senior component for part of it. You know, or i- i- but things like that. So it would be good to think ahead about this, about what we can do with it. Um, there's another, uh, the, um, I'm not going to go down the M B T A community rabbit hole with us at this point. But that may work its way into it as well. But I would say definitely thinking about, you know, and, um, this is going to be innovative. So it's a good time to be innovative. I mean, if this works, if this works, it will be, um, it will be something that's pretty neat. I mean, really, and and there's no reason it can't work. I mean, but.
Um, so when, when should we have that conversation, Bill? Because it sounds like a necessary conversation to have.
Uh, let's see what happens, um, with the presentation in two weeks.
What what's our, what's our meeting look like the first week of March? Is there any applicants joining us then?
I got bombarded with a bunch of stuff in the last week, little stuff, but I think it's all zoning board.
Okay.
I think.
Maybe we, let's, can we carve out some time that meeting and set aside? A chunk of time, um, for for that.
Yeah.
Discussion. And then you can send us some prep work. Discussion, and then you can send us some prep work ahead of time and. You can come prepared with concepts and ideas and how to approach.
Yeah.
The conversation that you just mentioned.
Here's something else too, that, that I was, that, um.
Sorry, Bill, hold on, um, how, how does that sound to board members? Carving out some time, beginning of March to have that, um, what, can you, Bill, can you say it again? You're looking for sort of vision guidance objectives.
I, I think, yes, I, I think that the same way that, that, there is, um, what I kind of doodled with. If, like with the downtown overlay district, if you remember how it's, you know, begins, it says, here's the purpose of downtown overlay district to do X, Y, Z. And I think. This last couple of years, we've done a fair amount of stuff where we used. Pretty much everything that was in there. I don't know that we did at first, you know, w- w- when it first came in. But we used everything from like the special permit criteria to, you know. Um. For, uh, getting a, um, you know, special permits, additional mitigation if we needed it. This type of thing, well, you know, I think we could do the same thing with the powder mill.
Okay, so what, what members, how does that sound, having a structured conversation around this the first week of March? Jim's, yes. Yep, Bill's, yes. And that Natalie?
Yes.
Bob, I'm, I'm just assuming you're a yes, so. Okay, all right, Bill, let's carve out some time on that. Um, like, we have two other goals that we set for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, which is our current fiscal year. One of those goals was to look at the downtown overlay district. And to see if we needed to make changes to that. The other goal was to look at the housing production plan, it as it relates to increasing housing stock. And we had, we had mentioned E D U's in that as well. So I'm curious if we feel that we have the attention span and capacity to start addressing one of those goals as well. This is to board members. Jim. You, do you like the idea?
I like the idea, yes.
Do you have a, do you have a general preference of, uh, which one we should tackle next?
Uh, I really, I really don't, Chris, I, either one.
Okay, other thoughts?
I know that there was another member of the zoning board who was also interested in beginning to talk about A D U. Until the C P C is done later this month. I mean, not done, but you know, both. I, my bandwidth has been, it's reached its max, so after that, I'm hoping to, you know, begin that process.
What's the C P C?
The Community Preservation Committee, which I am on. And another member of the planning board is probably going to be replacing me soon, I'm hoping, so something to consider. For all the other members.
We are required to have a representative, um. Of, uh, planning board, I, I, I could talk to you about that later, Chris, explain that, but we, a lot of us have taken turns with it.
It's awesome.
Are you, are you upselling it?
No, it is actually awesome, and Bill is on it. For his other, representing other people, but, uh, it's, no, it's.
Representing other people.
His other committees that we don't like to talk about.
Uh, are you, are you, are you thinking from timeline, like, April?
Yeah, I'm thinking like, really after this month, we're voting at our next meeting. And after that, I feel like I'm going to be able to relax my brain a little bit. Don't quote me on that, Bill.
Sure.
Well, the thing, the other thing is, I, I wouldn't mind waiting. Until I have to have the. M B T A community stuff has to be in, I think at the end of March, I'm drafting it up now. But that's going to. That may cha-, you know, that could change things a little bit too.
It's going to take months to get an effort started and get some momentum and get public input and things of that nature, so. I think, I think it's okay to start while other sort of items that might be tangibly attached to it are pending. Um, so I'm fine generally, think, speaking, uh, still, you know, other board members, let me know what you think, I'm fine. Pushing that towards, conceptually towards April and then to, to see if we can get some, some momentum on that goal. That sound okay? Um, okay, so what about the, looking at this downtown district? Uh, we, we, the concept here, I believe, um, and my rec- recollection is a little fuzzy, but that. Wanted to see if there's any changes, and it's, this is actually a master plan goal as well. Um, it's listed specifically in the master plan, which is for the, the, the planning board to review. The downtown overlay district to see if any changes could be made. Based on our experiences in the last handful of years, so that is something I, I also would like to get started at some point. And, and, and have, by the end of this fiscal year, I want it to be in progress. Whether we have completed that goal or not, but definitely in progress.
Well, we did, we did, remember last town meeting, we did do some small changes to it. Based on, on, we did some parking changes, we did, um.
We did, but that's not the intent of the master plan, the master plan was to look back on previous decisions and our experiences and see if there's. There's any big picture stuff that we would want to change, so I agree.
So like I can change like the, um. The shape of the, like, it's just kidding, I'm not going to do that, anyway.
Uh, that's where I would have started.
Listen, I.
That's, that's, that's on the table, guys, that's what, that's what the master plan, if you read the master plan goals, it says that we do a look back.
Yeah.
Based on our experiences and to see. What, what changes we would like to implement for the downtown overlay district.
I would like, we should look at that, that, I think. I can make a list.
That's true, yeah, we had, as a matter of fact, we met last night, master plan, that's on my update, my planner update, but we met last night on it and it came up. Where that was a master plan committee, it met last night.
So we'll get to that, Bill, um, so for the, 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 the meetings in March, the, the meeting, the first meeting in March is, what's the date on it, Bill? What? I'll look. Um, it would be the eighth, so March eighth would be the second Tuesday of the month. Now, so we're going to carve out time for the powder mill corridor discussion. Uh, is that an appropriate time to start on the zoning district, or should we maybe wait to the second? Maybe wait to the second meeting in March and discuss.
Yeah.
The zoning, the, the downtown overlay district.
I think so.
Okay, so let's carve out, and, and, you know, maybe. Maybe forty-five minutes for each. So let's just make it so that we don't have app, applicants. Um, unless there's a need, like I want to help out with the needs of applicants, but let's just assume that there's nothing from an urgency standpoint. Let's carve out, essentially forty-five minutes for each of those meetings. The first meeting of March will be for the. Powder mill corridor initiative, and the second meeting in March will be for reviewing the downtown overlay district. At our first goal at it, so Bill, if you could prep us. On, on both of those and prep us particularly for the downtown overlay district on. On, um, I'm not quite sure what, um, maybe board members, help me out here, um. Help me out with scope for the downtown overlay district and what we should prep, prepare for.
Sounds like whatever the master plan said.
It's pretty general, I can bring it up, but it just says do a review of the downtown.
I, I, I think it's mostly lessons learned, and, you know, it's like, oh, yeah, well, you know, they drew the line and they didn't really think about the edge. Over here, and. And, and my big one would be, the criteria doesn't fit everything. We get a little wishy-washy on that sometimes, what. I don't know, so there, there's some things we've experienced.
Yeah, maybe, um, the, maybe the concept of how mixed use plays into all of this and the. The square footage of the res, you know, the bottom units and. I don't know, I, yeah, I just. I also want to connect it to like reality, so it, so Bill, I know you're working with the master plan. No, you're working with the Economic Development Committee, aren't they? I saw some traction on looking at. Um, storefrontage and, uh, vacant properties and things of that nature. I don't know, maybe there's other committees that could help us out to get reality checks that the zoning that we have is matching the need.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe that'd be good prep work, understand what those things are.
They, um, yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we've really turned a corner in the last couple of years with what we're. Really what we've activated in the downtown overlay district and the Economic Development Committee, um. That, you know, they, they, when, when we were evaluating all the input. From the master plan implementation, uh, committee feedback. A lot of it, it was interesting to see how much kind of overlapped, which is good, because it shows, you know, everybody's rowing in the same direction somewhat. But, um. There were a couple of items that we, that, that, you know. That, uh, really popped up, like, I'll get, you know what the biggest one was? This is the craziest thing. Outdoor dining, now we, before we had the, um. Before we had the pandemic, you know, we were kind of scratching our heads like, wait a minute, why isn't there more? Interested outdoor dining and, and, and now it's like, we've already, we, we, we issued the, um. The call and everybody's back in for it, we already got that all set up. And, um, so now like the E D C. Uh, that, that, they're on part of that, and there's a question about what should we look at? Having the, the, you know, should we do a temporary dumpster area, you know, like we've been talking about the corral area in there. Uh, things like that, um, so the zoning. When we look at the feedback from the master plan committee, which is being assembled right now. There, there's going to be, it's interesting, because other people are looking at stuff too, and like I, I said, the neat thing for me, uh, anyway. Is that, uh, so many people are rowing in the same direction and they, they listed the same things. You know, that they were trying to achieve, and so maybe we can find some stuff in the zoning that, hey, we need to do this. To, you know, or whatever the case may be.
Can, can we, can we request maybe the E D C, the Economic Development Committee and, I don't know who else, um. May, maybe others that they. Can we request that they provide feedback before our meeting? The second meeting of March on their thoughts of. Of the, how the zoning has been working out for the.
I can try, that's, I can try, but that, that may be a little tough, because there, um. May have to go out a little farther than that, but I think that'd be healthy.
Eventually, I'd like, you know, my point is eventually to get feedback from others, um, this can be our first conversation internally.
Yeah.
Um, but that's part of it. Okay, I like this, um, any, so, so here, I'll just recap the plan here. Um, we, we work, continue to work on the powder mill corridor initiative, we have a meeting coming up. Uh, we have a presentation on the very twenty-second, we have some time carved out for the first week of March to. To discuss this, uh, are, are basically this will be our entry point in discussing what the zone, what the overlay district may look like, or the components that we. Would like to see in it, um, and what guidance we want to bring into it. Um, we're going to wait on A D U and housing production for, uh, uh, April. So that Natalie can, can join that effort and lead that effort with the zoning board or whoever else we, we get lined up with. And then, um, the second week of March, second meeting in March. Will be to, um, to have our preliminary dis- first discussion on. Um, our experiences and thoughts on the downtown overlay district. So that's the plan coming up, how's that plan sound? Jim likes it, okay.
Yep.
If Jim likes it, that's all I care about, actually, that's.
Thank you, Chris. You know, when, it'll be interesting when Natalie starts with the A D U's or the, whatever we're going to call them, accessory. Um. If our model works that we did with the. Um. Home occupations, we'll see tomorrow night, I guess, but, you know. We've made some, I, I, I think we're at the point where we really do need feedback, and if people understand it, I think we've. Hit a, we, we're at a point where I don't know what else we could really do. And, and I think it's pretty good with the stuff we've come up with, and maybe that formula would work well. Cause I don't know what with A D U's, that'd be a whole different thing, but.
I would think it, my plan would be kind of similar to get, to get public input early and often. And to build consensus around the concept with other committees and with, um, the community itself, but. That's just my general thoughts.
But yeah, Chris, so somewhat related question, comment, um. Go back to the home occupation forum tomorrow. Do we have a method or plan for the board members to provide their takeaways?
I did not even consider that, Bill, that's a great question. What, what do you, what do you think?
I mean, well, I mean, without doing a meeting, I guess it would just be. Feed it to. Bill.
Right. So, I guess in that meeting tomorrow night, I'm not sure that's the appropriate time for board members to voice their thoughts. I would prefer that if we all listen, the, the point is for, to get community input. But you're right, maybe, um. I don't know, would you think we should have another, we should carve out some time, you know, upcoming meeting to this, to discuss and as a team? Perhaps, is, I, I'll leave it to you to tell me when you think the right time to get that type of input is. But you're right, it should happen.
You don't want me talking tomorrow, but I love to talk.
Well, I, the thing that's good.
Stop you, Natalie, I just, you know.
Oh, no, you're right, you're right.
Well, if we get, like, the, the PowerPoint that Chris did, um, it lays the, um. Miss, hopefully it diffuses a lot of the misconceptions. Before we get started in the conversation, so we can really make the most out of the time, you know. So I, I think. That'd be good.
Yeah, I don't know, I. I just wish that we should have some way of gathering the, the takeaways from us and Z B A members.
From the, from tomorrow's meeting specifically or?
Yeah, from, like, you know, what were, what were the most important things you heard and?
Can we, oh, Bill afterwards?
Yeah, well, you know, we could, we're gonna, we're gonna record it, remember too, so if people, you know, uh, if, um. You know, so if somebody doesn't see it too, we can ask, you know. To look at the take, get the takeaways too, and I'll certainly keep my own list, but I'm.
Uh, sure, if there is time, we could close the hearing, the, the close. The, you know, there's no open and close to this listening session, but we could say, you know, that if, if we run out of public input and there's no more questions. We could roll right into a planning board discussion, or is that not allowed, because we need to post that type of?
Supposed to mean it, supposed to mean it, you're not going to be, you're not going to be, you're not voting on any, um.
Yeah.
On any item that would be a, uh, would warrant a public hearing, you can't.
So, Bill, Prince, uh, I, if we rolled right into a discussion, would that, that seem reasonable?
But, strikes me as dangerous, but okay.
Yeah.
Our discussion points might not be the same as the other attendees, you know.
Understood, so maybe we just play it by ear, um, but I guess, and so the other options would be to send Bill Nims or. Comments and thoughts. Or we put it on, have, have a part of a planner update at an upcoming meeting?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, sure, I think that's nice, good. Yeah.
Just meeting wise, I mean, we can't do anything on the twenty-second, right?
Right.
Getting a little busy on the twenty-second.
Oh, it's super busy, and then. Then we got the first one in March, which, you know, people would still be remembering enough to discuss, but. I will chew up the timeline we've already put together for that meeting.
I think there's enough room on that meeting to do it then.
Okay, well, well, maybe, maybe feed stuff to Bill and then, you know, go over it. In, in a shorter amount of time during that meeting.
Sure, is, is that, is, does that work with the timeline that we have established, that, that you're thinking of?
Yeah, yeah, that works.
Okay, so I think that's the plan, then we'll. Provide email comments or whatever types of comments you want, you can go yell at Bill Downtown too, if you want. Um, regarding the meeting, um, and then on the ninth, we'll, we'll discuss, Bill Nims, it sound good?
Yep.
I wonder how many people are going to come.
Did we have a pre-register?
Yeah, we did, I didn't make it mandatory. So we don't know exactly, but it, it's all over the place, I mean, I've seen it pop up on, on a couple of medias. And that, that's, you know, that's why your PowerPoint is so important in the beginning. Cause we could end up wasting the whole time on something that is not even being, you know, discussed, and that's why I like the way we did. That PowerPoint, um, but I would. I mean, we always have good turnout for this kind of thing, we're, we're, we have a public notice, and I sent it again, I blasted it ye- yesterday or day before. Again, so. Notice, and I sent it again, I blasted it ye- yesterday or day before, again, so, you know, um. I'm gonna do the event right from now on, and I realize the other reason why is because. It automatically sends reminders too to people, so that's kind of good, but, but like, uh. Bill had mentioned, you know, you don't want people to think they have to register, they don't have to, but if you, what I, the way I said is, you know, you do it, and we'll send you, you get a reminder. It's free of charge, you get a reminder.
It's free of charge.
Many responses did you get to the survey?
Um, what's happening? At fifty-eight responses, I have a table open right here. I can, can I share that with, is that okay? Am I allowed to do that?
No, I don't do that here.
Okay, all right.
We don't, we don't wanna predispose the discussion tomorrow.
Yeah, it's good, true.
Yeah, I'm just reading through.
Don't worry.
Okay, um, any, anything else, team?
I have a interesting observation that. Has. Totally confused me. I noticed as I cruise Realtor dot com that. The most expensive single-family home ever sold in Maynor just went under contract or went contingent. For eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. And it's at one thirty-two Parker Street, right across the street from the Parker Street development. So all I can think of is, you know. Being close to a Dunkin' Donuts really increases your house value, but I, I am flabbergasted that. Somebody would pay eight hundred and fifty grand to live on Route twenty-seven across from that wall.
Is it a large property?
It's three-quarter acre, it's a brand new, they gutted the whole thing, thirty-five hundred square feet, everything is spanking new, all the. Highlights you want.
Good for them.
Man. That would not be the location where I kind of put that much money, but hey, that's what the market does today.
Wow.
And the other house is just down the street on Wisteria. You know, we're going for seven sixty, I believe. Yeah, one, one went for eight, ten or eight twenty. Um, yeah. So apparently we should move our houses to Route twenty-seven and then the value will go up. Weird.
I wonder who got the bid on the affordable, that was, uh.
Oh, yeah, they do that, oh.
Yeah, they did it, they did it, but I'm not, I'm not, it was last week. I, I mean, that was a pretty good. That was a good one.
Yeah, I don't know, I just thought it was interesting to see that, that house go, and it went quick too. I mean, it was like, it was listed less than a week, I'm sure.
I wonder if that'll have some more of those houses as time passes.
Well, they are getting another one, a couple lots over, right across from the entrance too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, there's one that's coming to me on the, um, zoning board, that's, um. Uh, that's gonna do some stuff. They re-got, redoing the whole kit and caboodle.
I don't know, well, if they wanna pay eighteen grand a year in real estate taxes, then you'll probably save me a couple bucks, so I'm for it.
Oh, my God.
I, I have a few updates if you want to hear, if you're.
Uh, it, it, just, just another call, any, any, any other thoughts, board members, on all this that we discussed? Um, any other an- anecdotal stories like Bill Crenshaw's that are very fascinating? Anything else, board members, no?
Hey, my, mine was planning related.
Oh, no, no, completely, um, right on point, I'm not at all, that wasn't derogatory in any sense, Bill Crenshaw. I love, I love anecdotal thoughts.
Oh.
All right, Bill, you're for.
I'm. Ready, am I okay to go ahead?
Yeah.
So, oh, by the way, uh, just, uh, let's see here, um. Uh, my updates go. Okay, um. We have good news to start, um, we got a grant last week, um. Kind of a. Last minute grant, and it came in for one hundred thousand dollars. And we got it from the, um. The I ninety-five, or I, I, four ninety-five Metro West Partnership. And it is a hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the River Street lot with lighting. And with some improvements, um. Um, for pedestrians and trying to, um. Put some new signage in, uh, they're gonna do some new topping on the asphalt. Uh, and, um, so DPW is drawing up that scope now, but that was one we just. You know, it was just a last minute thing, came in, filled it out and doggone it, we got it, so that's a good one.
The River Street lot, that's the one south of Main Street behind.
The, the one right behind, um.
Kind of beyond the sanctuary, but kind of.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, so we got, that was pennies from heaven. Um, so that was a, that was a good one, that just a nice surprise. Uh, last night, the master plan, um. Implementation Committee, uh, like I said, we met with, um, they, um. Were really, when we started putting stuff on paper about. Meeting objectives and of the master plan and so on, um. A lot of our stuff, we. Was up right front and center there, which is, was really cool. Um, and the only other thing I have is that, um. We're going, well. No, I guess not, I'm bringing that up, but, uh, six PM tomorrow night, uh, is our start. Not six thirty-six, and, um. It'll be pretty interesting to see what happens, I mean, Bill, Bill, Bill and I, I don't think we. I'm baffled, because I'm like, wait a minute, if everybody understands this, there's nothing, it's pretty good, but. But who knows what we'll come up with, but. I don't know what else we could do, Bill, I don't know.
Why did I think it was six thirty, did I?
Because, um.
A meeting on February twenty-second is gonna start at six thirty.
Really? I should write that down.
Right, that's, so we're gonna do, have the presentation. From M A P C at six thirty.
Right.
Sorry, so everyone, um, on February twenty-second, we're meeting at six thirty for the M A P C presentation.
Right. And that's all I got.
Okay. Any other thoughts, guys? Wow, very efficient meeting. Um, Jim, you, would you wanna do the honors?
I would be delighted to, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to close the meeting.
Thank you, Jim, I second that motion. All in favor by voice, Bob?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
And I'm also, yes, that's five zero, and close the meeting, Bill. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys, see you tomorrow night, thanks, everybody.
Good night, now.
Hi, thank you.